I'd like to bring tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mrs. Flippa?
Here.
Ms. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Ms. Pickering?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay, we stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to make note of executive session, March 21st, 2022, for contract negotiations and student discipline. At this time, we will have public comment regarding any of the issues on tonight's agenda. So what I'm going to do, there's quite a few people signed up to speak regarding those that I know that are on the agenda, so I'm just going to start as you signed in and call your name up and please state your name and where you live and what topic you wish to discuss. So we'll start with Kathy Graham.
My name's Kathy Graham and I'm from French Creek Township. I'm mainly here to see how the vote goes tonight for township for changing to the new method. I was hoping to be more towards the end to see how it goes, but that's mainly why I'm here, is to see what decisions are made tonight and where we go from here. And I might know more by the end of the night.
Okay, thank you, Kent. All right. I have an edna devoir or eddevoir. Is that on tonight's agenda, what you wish to speak about?
Uh, no.
Okay, then we'll get you at the end of the meeting.
Aye.
And I know Amy Oviot is at the end of the meeting. Legay, is that, am I saying it correctly, Lindsey?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Legay Lindsey and I'm employed by Hubbard Bus Service. I retired in 2018 and September 18th, I came onboard to be a bus driver. First off, it is very hurt for all of us drivers that the board wants to give a contract to G G and C Bus Company, which is 118 miles away in Washington, PA. Hubbard has been a part of Meadville School District for 40 years, fulfilling their contract year after year, and for $3 million, you want to kick Hubbard to the bus curb. But it was a shortage on substitute teachers and you was able to give them a pay raise, a substantial pay raise, and there's a shortage of bus drivers, if you don't know that. All of us drivers working for Hubbard, which is a top-notch employer who treats us all very well, and we are, he treats us very, very well, and we are very happy to work for him. When we have bus issues with a child or multiple children, Jeff, with the good reputation that he has with the principals and the teachers, usually gets this issue taken care of in a timely manner, yet not the same day, the very next day. Will the new owners have the same positive results? The main things are the children's attitudes is really what is an issue. We all have our doubts and the end results are you will lose drivers, as many, like I am, are retirees and working for just a little extra money. We're currently short four drivers and Jeff has had to combine routes, run combined routes himself to ensure the kids get to and from school on time and safety, safely. I'm pretty sure the board does not know this is happening. Do the new owners have the same success in not knowing the Meadville area? The answer is a simple, in my opinion, no. Now you have a problem. PA's yearly average bus driver salary as of February 22nd is $23,000 a year. We at Hubbard Bus is substantially lower and we would like more, but we all know it is what it is. So if G G and C cannot exceed our current salary by 30%, including trips, many drivers, including myself, will not be returning for the '22, '23 school year. Right now, there are a host of drivers that said they will not be returning during next school year if the board awards G and G and C or even Christ Bus Service the bus contract. So now you have another problem, a bus driver shortages. We all know that it's impossible to hire new bus drivers since there's a shortage nationwide, including Crawford County. Nobody wants to drive a bus because of children's behavior. Again, you have a problem. So have you heard a hearing? Have you heard a saying, "We are family"? Well, that's what we are at Hubbard Bus, we are family. So in closing, we would like the board to reconsider this decision on awarding the bus contract to G G and C or Christ Bus Service and consider awarding the contract to Hubbard Bus, so that we can be part of the community, trust with your kids for the next five or years longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kim Laird.
Hi, I'm Kim Laird. I'm also from Meadville. I'm also employed with Hubbard Bus Service. What we would like to know is, Meadville, you're reconsidering the bid for Meadville, what about Cochranton? Cochranton's part of Crawford Central, too. Maybe it's because you got a board member on that drives for Cochranton? I don't know. And then, is Meadville's bid the same as Cochranton's bid, as far as wages go, as far as anything goes? That's what we'd like to know.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Davison.
for Hubbard Bus Service. I'm here to speak to about a few issues, along with my fellow school bus drivers. I'm not sure how at $70 a day that we are supposed to survive on that rate. You know, Jeff wanted to give us more money, he wanted to make the wage fair. You gave your substitute teachers a raise, but yet when he come to you all, you gave us nothing. You know how hard it is to live on $1,400 a month? It's impossible. There's a handful of us that drive that aren't making it, that are going to lose their vehicles, that are losing their apartments or houses because they can't, simply can't make it. I don't know, if you have a new company coming in and none of us are going to drive for them, obviously, for even less money, I don't care if they're new buses, you know, that's, if there's nobody to drive them, it's useless. So I think you really need to think about that. That's all I have to say, but I really hope you take this into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Now, I had two other people signed up to speak, but I'm not sure if it was about tonight's agenda or not. Xavier Rios?
Yes.
Is it about tonight's, on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Okay, could you come forward and tell us what it's about, please?
My name's Javier Rios. Currently, I'm a disabled person that I work for Hubbard as well. I came to this wonderful city five years ago from San Diego, California, you know, and I love this town. You know, I love my fellow workers, you know. I'll let you guys know, and I just want to say thank you for letting us talk and let us, let you guys know how we feel. You know, bottom line is, I'll speak for myself, but if you see this group here, as Legay said, we are family, we care about each other, and with that care, we care about the children that we bus every day. You know, I have a wonderful, I myself was told this year that, "Javi, you're going to have this route because these kids are out of control." Okay? They're bad. You know, and for me, to be able to be part of these kids' life, when I see them come up to the bus and I give them a smile and say, "You know what? It's a good day. Let's have a great day today." You know, I have, I have, I have a bond with a lot of my kids on my bus, you know, and God's always told me, "Be kind, loving and caring," you know, and that's what I do with my kids on my bus. You know, who, this company that's coming in today, or who you guys might vote in to be the next bus company, they're going to have a hard time finding bus drivers. We have a group of bus drivers for Meadville, and I, and I look around here, some of you guys don't know, but some of these people here, some of these drivers here have been working for Hubbard Company for over 20 years.
I do, you know.
Over 20 years.
Two more.
And we don't, we don't talk about that, you know? The situation with COVID, not one time has this board ever told us, "Thank you for busing our children." Have you ever thought about that? What about us? I am, I could get sick really bad. I took my, I did my vaccines, but I should continue to come to work and bus my children because I know that I will get them to school and back safely. I care about this company. I care about Jeff. Jeff takes care of us. We are the lowest-paid bus drivers in this county. You look around and you do your homework and you find out how many, how much people make in these other different counties, and then you look at what we getting paid, and yet we still come every day, every day, to come and bus our children. I call them our children because that's who they are. When they get on my bus, they're just like my kids. Are you going to find bus drivers like that? And I'll tell you and I guarantee you, all of my bus drivers here that are sitting here today, today, that's how they feel about their kids. Their safety comes first. You find bus drivers that care about your kids. My kids have been here, they've gone to school, my grandkids have been here, and I trust my bus drivers. And I'm so grateful for that. I know I have three minutes, but I just want to let you know, you know what? We are united, we're going to stay united as a family, as bus drivers for this company. And I hope you guys look in consideration that this is what we do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ron, I see you're signed up to speak. Is it about tonight's agenda?
Well, seeing that roll call is part of the agenda, I would say it is, so.
Roll call, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you, Ron.
An anonymous blogger created a blog titled "Kinder for Nightmare Four," is the number four, to look into candidates who were running for local elections. Now they have started blogging on some other issues, including city council, land banks, and school board. A few days ago, there is a blog saying scandal on the school board about Elise Palmer's absence. Posted on there is 1949 Act 14, Section 319, and I'm not going to read all of it because of the time. Attend meetings if any person elected, blah, 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 shall neglect or refuse to attend two successive regular meetings of the school board, blah, blah, shall neglect or refuse act in their official capacity, the remaining members of the board may declare their office as director vacant. Regular meeting definition, the best definition I could find, it's not defined in the act, but regular meetings are regularly scheduled meetings set on a particular day, such as second Tuesday of a month. Special meetings are, special meetings of the board are not regularly scheduled. So then it was also posted, the minutes from the meeting, and we have the reorganization meeting, which would be a special meeting, Monday, December 6th. In attendance, Elise Palmer was here, but that again is not a regular meeting. Committee meeting, January 18th, members present, Elise Palmer was. Regular board meeting, Monday, January 24th, Elise Palmer absent. The committee meeting on Monday, February 21st, members absent, Elise Palmer. Regular meeting, Monday, February 28th, member absent, Elise Palmer. And committee meeting on March 21st, absent, Elise Palmer. And again, tonight, she is absent. So, but seems, according to a social media post, she had time to go to a poetic evening on March the 5th, 2022. Therefore, I'm asking the board to amend tonight's agenda to include declaring Ms. Palmer's seat on the school board vacant per the act that allows that, being 1949 Act 14.
Thank you. Okay, we now will move on to student representatives. Cochranton Junior Senior High School. Yeah, but he didn't sign.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought, okay, okay, sorry, I thought you signed to speak, that's all.
I, I didn't see that you weren't to speak.
Wait, hang on a second.
I'm sorry, Larry.
I was trying to straighten something.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, if you want to speak, come up.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was straightening.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're going to have you next. We got one more public speaker. I thought he assigned in to speak and that's what I was trying to straighten out.
Thank you. My name's Larry McKnight. I too am a driver at Hubbard. And as you heard my coworkers speaking about what's going on, they've already mentioned to you about the pay increase. They've also mentioned to you about their willingness to drive, how much we like our jobs and they enjoy it. One of the things I like to mention is that, you know, you're talking about salary or saving money, and you may be doing that, but you're putting your children's lives at a risk. As stated earlier, we all care about our jobs. We care about the children that we haul. When you're, you're bringing people from out of this area, in the wintertime, they don't know this area, they're on backcountry roads with our children, our roads aren't always plowed in the wintertime when they're getting up and we're getting ready to take them to school. Our people are from this area, they know this area, they know the weather. The quality of drivers, what are we going to get? What are you going to get when you bring these, this new company in? Are you going to get, for the pay that they're offering, are you going to get drivers that are qualified? Anybody can get behind the wheel of a vehicle or a bus, but are they qualified to be behind the wheel? We are trained, we take training, we are updated, we get physicals, we make sure, our boss makes sure, the state makes sure that we are qualified. Also, we make sure that our equipment, that's part of my job as well as driving, is I help and work with the mechanics. We have two great mechanics, they keep things running for us. Are you going to do that with another company? Are they going to have mechanics that really care? If we can't afford something, Jeff comes out of his pocket for it, okay? Jeff, as everyone stated, is an excellent boss to work for. He's done things for the community that people don't even know about, buying gifts for children who the bus driver may have heard that this kid's not having a good Christmas. He's helped us out personally. It's more than just bringing a company in. You want a company that's going to be a part of your community, that's going to be a part of the kids that ride that bus. As you've heard people state, we are part of these kids' lives, we're the first person that they see in the morning and in many cases, the last. We know a lot more about these kids than, I would even say, some of your CYS workers and your other healthcare, you know, people that work with them. They talk to us, we build rapport with them and with the families. I understand what you're trying to do, but is it the right thing to do? And I just want you guys to think about it and look at the lives that it's affecting. It's not only affecting us as workers, but the kids. You're going to have total strangers on driving our kids, and that could be traumatic to some of these kids, who we are the only people that, other than parents, that they speak and talk to. So I want you, you really would appreciate it if you take the time and think about what you're, what you're wanting to do. If it's because just the money, I don't see that, you know? I don't understand, and I think they've mentioned it, I don't understand how they can even come up this far, 100-some miles, 150-some miles, and even compete or tell us that they're going to increase our pay, have newer equipment on what you're paying them. I'd like to see that happen. I mean, with everything being positive. You know, I can tell you that the sun is going to shine tomorrow, but you won't find out until tomorrow gets here. And that's what's going to happen with this company. I believe that once they get here, they're, they're making promises, making everything nice and rosy, but when they get here and their drivers that they may bring up.
Excuse me, Mr. McKnight, just, can you wrap it up in a minute?
Sure.
Because we're at your three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my point is this, I want to see that the company stay here. I think a lot of people want to see the company stay here for the fact that it's more than just a company, it's part of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, is there anybody else that would like to speak about tonight's agenda before we move on? Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm Kendall, I'm from Cochranton, I'm just going to tell you guys a little bit about what's going on. So our boys varsity volleyball team participated in a tournament in Meadville this past weekend, and they placed third. They'll be going to another tournament in York, PA this weekend. Our baseball team scrimmaged Cranberry last Tuesday. The boys will be playing at Cache on Wednesday and at Youngsville on Saturday. Our softball team had a successful scrimmage against Titusville last Tuesday. The girls are continuing practices this week and will have a scrimmage at Gerard on Friday. The juniors and seniors of STEM go on a field trip this week. They'll be touring the Acute Precision Aerospace Inc. for the entirety of the day. And our NTMA club has their first regional competition on Saturday this week, which they've been prepping for all year. They'll be competing with four different robots on four separate teams throughout the day and are hoping to take home, take at least one team to the top three. Our school events, we don't have a lot going on right now, but we figured out a couple things for our American Heart Association fundraiser. We're preparing to do a couple small projects to gather change and other bills. Student council is planning to hold a clean-out-your-council activity throughout the next few weeks. We will also be doing a pay-to-play in the cafeteria and a competition to see which teachers can raise the most money. I'd also just like to say, on behalf of everybody at Cochranton, I'd like to wish Mr. Merritt a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
She was pregnant.
Yeah. Happy birthday, Kevin.
Yeah.
Meadville Area Senior High School, Kate Emili and Megan Willis.
Okay, starting with upcoming events, on April 2nd, Meadville will be hosting the robots, as Kendall mentioned before, where schools around the area will compete with their robots that they made. And on April 13th, we will be having, Meadville will be hosting its annual school-wide dodgeball tournament. Students from each grade level will put together teams to compete, and the winner of the tournament will get to play teachers in a final game. And some events from March, Match Key Club hosted a blood drive on the 22nd, and this was their second of the school year. And students from Mash traveled to Franklin, PA this past Thursday and Friday for the Regional PMEA Festival, which is of course, a choir festival. So for sports, Mash senior Griffin Bazal traveled to Hershey for states and brought home a fifth-place finish, so. And then Olivia Fulpick also, senior, traveled to states for swimming, finishing 17th in the Hunter Backstroke.
Also, our boys volleyball team opened their season on Friday with a match against Northeastern, which we won three to one. Following the match on Saturday, Meadville hosted its annual invitational tournament, where local teams came to participate, as well as teams from Shaler, North Catholic, Northeastern, Hempfield, and Bishop-Gilfoyle. Meadville ended up losing in the finals to Shaler after going undefeated all day. Meadville's next match will be Thursday at home against Cochranton. The tennis team started its season, but they have not had any matches yet, and as you can see, the weather is not participating for outdoor sports. Baseball opened their season with a scrimmage in Pittsburgh against Shaler on the 17th, and the Bulldogs fell short of winning, which, and then they played at home against Gerard and won nine to two. Our softball team recently got back from their spring shift to Wilmington, North Carolina, where the fields here are unplayable, they were able to practice outdoors and do other activities with the team there. On the 20th, they traveled to Pittsburgh to play in a scrimmage in the Dome against Maplewood, and both JV and Varsity won their games. And we're just looking forward to being at all our spring sports this season and finishing the year off well. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors.
Ma'am's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am's. Chelsea Osterkamp and Isabella Thorson.
At Ma'am's, we are finishing up the third quarter and are ready to close out the school year with our best effort. The girls and boys volleyball are beginning their seasons. The boys started strong by placing first at the Cochranton Tournament Friday, and the girls kick their season off today at Maplewood. The Ma'am's track and field began practicing on March 21st. Fifty students are on the team. The team has one dual meet, one try meet, and three invitationals. The first competition is a dual meet, April 6th at Franklin, and the season concludes on May 17th at the McDowell Middle School District Meet. Student council collected items for sailors on the USS Bainbridge. The items were picked up by the Meadville Lions so they can receive their items in time for Easter. Student council had 30 share marks and gave out prizes to winners for St. Patrick's Day. We also hosted a Disney Week, and the students had opportunities to dress up. And music news, the jazz band is traveling to perform at the Maplewood High School and Cache Jazz Festivals this week.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes, the regular board meeting of February 28th, 2022, and the committee of the whole meeting of March 21st, 2022, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Kevin, second. Thank you, Jeff. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Can I have a point of order, though? Just a point of order. When, when would it be beneficial to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to discuss the vacancy of our existing board member?
I imagine, Tim, would that be at the end of the meeting, or? My mic is on.
You have a, under item 10, there's another public or board comments section.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
If, if the board wanted to entertain a motion, that is when you would need to amend the agenda.
Okay.
If you were going to ask for a motion, one way or the other, I would like the opportunity to give you some legal advice in the executive session prior to that occurring.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought would need to happen.
We'll move on to committee reports. Melissa Burnett, curriculum, please.
Yes, resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the second and final reading of the jewelry and metal smithing curriculum for grades 11 and 12 at Meadville Area Senior High School. And I saw moves.
In a second, please. Kevin?
Can she, or she needs to speak to the mic, they couldn't hear her in the back, though.
Please. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we also have the first reading of the following curriculum, Foods 1, 2, and 3, grades 9 through 12 at Cochranton Junior Senior High School, and the HTML and web page design, grades 12 through 10, 10 through 12 at the Meadville Area Senior High School. No motion or anything is needed, it's the first reading.
We'll move on to transportation. Delwood, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule K, number 456, bids for transportation service in the Meadville attendance area for 2022. for 2022 through 2027. I so moved.
And I need a second. Melissa, thank you. Questions or comments?
I have some questions. So, based on some of the things that were discussed by the members here, the community, is, have they proposed potential positions that will be offered to the current Hubbard Bus Members? Will there be positions-
There will be positions available.
Then my second question is, is there gonna be a location in Crawford County such as a bus garage like Hubbard has?
Of course, they would have to have, of course, they would have to have a depot here.
That's what I feel.
We would not take the bit if it did.
Okay, I heard that in one of the questions, in one of the statements today. And then, have they disclosed a rate of pay that they would be paying?
It is in the contract, but obviously, we haven't approved it yet. So, but we feel that once the bus drivers understand what that pay rate is, it's obviously gonna be fair.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to make a comment. I mean, we dealt with Jeff on numerous occasions over the last two years on extending a contract, renegotiating a contract, and just as much as last fall, we were sitting down and even going out of our way to accommodate additional fees, monies to him, to bring in other drivers if he would need them, which was gonna cost us, as a district, additional monies over and above the contract. It just got to the point where, and I believe Mr. McFadden was in favor, I mean, he didn't want us to sit anymore negotiating, that we opened it up for a request for proposals. And I know when I sat in that meeting, when we were meeting, I said, there's things that can happen. An outside company could come in and bid, although I didn't see one of the nationwide contractors like Student Transportation of America that has a general consensus of coming in, and they bid super low to get a contract, and then they nail you five years later. But I told the board, I said, or Jeff could bid himself out of competition. And I know he kinda had a plan in place of what he wanted to do. I don't know how much he told his employees what he was doing, but from what I gathered was, he was looking at, yeah, maybe acquiring new buses, which the formula, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, favors a reimbursement rate on newer equipment than it does older equipment. And now we're at this point where the bids have come in. I believe there was a potential of seven bidders. Three have bid. We have the Kreis Company, which is currently at Alprey and Albion. We have GGNC, which is currently working out of Washington, PA. And I'm not saying these are their headquarters. These are where they're currently working, that they were checked with references. And of course Hubbard here in Meadville. When I look at a total expenditure of anywhere from ten million, forty thousand dollars with GGNC, to Hubbard bidding fifteen million, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars over the five years, to me, there's a major discrepancy with even the guy in the middle with twelve million, seven hundred thousand. I can't fiscally sit here, and I'm hearing what you bus drivers are saying, and I know what you're saying. You've worked with these kids, you've worked with the families, you know the families. You are part of our district, I understand that. But where do we come up with five million dollars plus over the next five years, when we're gonna be working very hard on cutting expenses, and I'm not sure we're cutting ourselves, that we're gonna jeopardize the safety of our students? When the, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six components went into the total evaluation score, Hubbard scored seventy-one percent. And this is all public record, you can find it on the website. Kreis came in at eighty-five percent. GGNC was at ninety-one percent. Leaves me to believe, our criteria was, the criteria was met and judged. Not only is GGNC the lowest bidder, but they had the highest score. And she can put it up on the screen. So, I know change is out there. It can happen. I only hope that when GGNC comes to town, you people give them an ample opportunity to go through his interview service, look at what they have. And if you're not happy, you're not happy. But fiscally, I'm in support of awarding it to GGNC.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I have a comment. Thank you for coming. This means you guys care. Thank you for transporting our children. I see no reason why this group couldn't work for another company. And the only reason why I'm saying that is Jeff's had a number of chances to negotiate a deal, and he didn't. I know what loyalty means. I spent over twenty years working for a company here in Meadville, and when it came time to cut costs, they didn't care who they cut. I'm just saying you guys have a great opportunity to work for another company and still remain being a family.
But if this company is not even known-
It's a butt.
...to pick wages.
It's a butt.
And we're not going, this is, this is for the board to discuss now. So, are there any other comments from the board?
We can't even defend ourselves. This is silly.
Are there any other comments?
I do wanna make one more, though. One more, because the lady had talked about, and it's relevant to this, the Cochranton contract with Gerard's. It's a separate contract. Their contract is up the end of this school year, and I believe our administration has been or will be meeting with them on renegotiating their contract. If the terms can't be met, we'll be reposting that busing contract as well for proposals for the fall. But that is something, or they can negotiate the same thing that Jeff was offered, an extension of his contract, another year, and then we go for maybe another contract with Gerard's, or at that point, we would go out for proposals. So it's, there are two separate contracts, and that's how it's been. And I don't know how that ever came about for the district, but two private carriers, and that's how it's been. But I wanted to address that before you left.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven to one.
Ryan.
It was Ryan. Ryan.
We'll move on to Jeff Rowe's approval of financial activities.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: the treasures report for January.
Just hold on a second. Just hold on, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: the treasures report for January, the financial statements, and the payment of bills, and I so moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I think I asked Jeff for a moment here. I want to talk to the board. After, after the presentation last week, I was curious about the comparison between the board members' assessment and Mrs. Klein's house. And I was wondering why that gap exists, okay? And I wanted to have some clarifying questions. And I started digging into it. I called this, I called the assessor, and I wanted to just share with you, and I'm gonna go back to the mic, folks. I just wanna share with you something, sorry, Delwood, that I wanted to make sure we understood that formula, because it didn't make, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And I, too, was understanding, yes, we should move, move in the direction that we talked about. But Lisa, can you just put this up for a second? So when I looked, and I saw the comparison between the board members and Mrs. Klein's home, I went, and I talked to our business manager, and I was like, I don't understand how does this get here? How does it get to that point? Does that make sense? How does the gap exist? And I started digging into it. So Lisa, go to the next slide. And I want, I want the board to understand, there are some theories that you have to understand that goes into this formula. Kevin, I don't know, when you were looking at, looking into this, if you came across this. But number one is that the theoretical underpinning of this theory is common level ratios, is the annual establishment of the assessed value to the current market value. So you have assessed value and a market value, okay? Now, the key to understanding the difference in what makes it tick, the lever that pulls it, is that, and Ron, you said something that triggered me. When I say I'm going for clarifying questions, you remember when you said, well, geez, when a house sells, it should be reassessed, right? Or when it's built?
They're not reassessed.
Right, exactly. But I was thinking that when the comment, we were going back and forth. So the base year, the base year is the only time that your assessed value and your fair market value equal. That's important, because as that separates, we're gonna get into understanding why the formula is different. That's crucial. So the CRL basically measures how a county's base year assessment compares with the current real estate valuation. So what your base year is and what it sells for. Makes sense? So, the, so in reality, the bigger the gap between the base year, and I'm gonna show you something about the base year, the bigger the gap in the base year, right, and the market value, the less we can compare homes from different counties. The bigger the gap in the base year, the less we can compare the compatibility of homes in different counties. I know it sounds confusing. So why, why do we have to see L R? It's because it becomes a mathematical way that counties avoid the effort and cost of computing a reassessment annually. So rather than having to do a reassessment each year, they do a C L R. It's designed to, to create a level playing field. Now, I'm gonna show you this. Go to the next slide. There were some things, some questions that came up, and I just thought, wow, if that question came up, then there needs to be some clarifying. So let me give you some demographics. In the first slide, I just simply give you the population of the nine municipalities. That's what that slide is. That's the population of the nine, the nine townships municipalities, okay? On the next slide, if you take a look at it, because some of these things start to play in. The median household income of the Crawford County, these are the nine municipalities, this is the median household income, which ranges from thirty-six thousand to sixty-four thousand. Okay, just demographic information. Okay, the next slide is the median household value, meaning what the house is valued at. And that's gonna be different than assessed value, okay? You can see that that ranges from eighty-one thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand. Now, here's, okay, one more demographic. I just put it in here because when I was digging into this, it all leads you down this hole where you have all these variables. The percentage of homeownership in each municipality. You can see that the homeownership ranges from thirty-nine percent to about ninety-one percent homeownership, okay? And, Ron, I'll get your question, I promise you. So here's the interesting thing. If you go to the next slide, and this is what Mrs. Graham was talking about, right? When you take this slide, the base assessment, the base assessment is the year of nineteen seventy-two. So from nineteen seventy-two to two oh two, Mercer County was paying thirty-three point three percent assessment. Everybody with me so far? Then in two oh two, what Mrs. Graham was saying, they went to a hundred percent, a hundred percent assessment on fifteen thousand base year. That's important to keep in mind. On the base year, okay? So, if you, I want the board members who can, take out your calculators on your phone. And anybody under the sound of my voice with a calculator and phone, you can join me. I'm not saying only the board members can do this. I wanna show you how your fair market value becomes calculated, because the CRL is designed to give you your fair market value, right? And your fair market value is every, every year, the county takes it, and they say, if Crawford has eleven homes, they take the middle number, and they say that that's your fair market value, okay? And then they create a C L, C L R number, okay? So let me show you how you get, and this is, this is publicized on the website as well. So if you take a fifteen thousand dollar home, okay, fifteen thousand times six point four nine, that's the C L R of Mercer. Anybody wanna tell me what they get?
Ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty.
That's the fair market value price of a house in Mercer County. Now-
Not my own.
Okay, but no, no, I didn't say your home. I said the fair, listen to what I'm saying. Before, hold all your arguments, everybody can beat me up at the end, I promise you, I'll take all the questions, all right? That's the fair market value in Mercer County. That's not me. Of a fifteen thousand dollar home.
In seventy-two.
But no, Jeff, that's, that's the only value they use is nineteen seventy-two. That's why I just said to you, go back to the theory, the base year is important. They don't, that's it. That's the year they use.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
So if it's worth fifteen thousand, seventy-two.
The only time-
It's gonna be taxed as a ninety-seven thousand, three hundred this year.
No, 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 no. I-
Taxed at fifteen.
It's taxed at fifteen, but the fair market value, what the house can be sold for is seventy, it's ninety-seven. You got me? Now, thanks. Take that same fifteen thousand dollar home, multiply it by four point one three. Fair market value of a house in Crawford County. Same assessment. Same assessment, right? Now, let me just flip it to the next, I'm gonna show you something.
How'd you get same assessment?
It's fifteen. Just using the base. Just using fifteen seventy-two to here. Just using same base, right? Now, I'm gonna go to the next page, which is another base, Kevin, I'll show you. Okay? I'm just doing apple to apple right there, okay? So now, go to Crawford, and you look at a fifteen thousand home assessed, but here's the difference, Kevin, let's show you the difference. How did I get that difference? They reassessed in nineteen eighty-five. The base year changed.
Not reassessed. They did a re, because, no, there's not been a countywide reassessment. They did a re-base year assessment.
Okay, but they-
But not reassessment.
Okay, you can-
I just wanna clarify.
A base year assessment.
Yeah.
But they did an assessment, which made that fifteen thousand reassessed, Kevin? Would you agree to forty-two thousand, and then seventy-five percent of it? That's what they did.
I'm gonna take your word on that.
Okay.
I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm saying, well, unless they're telling me it's not true, then that's fine. But that's what they did. That made that assessment go up to 42,000 and then they took 75% of the 31. Make sense? Okay. So that difference, what I'm just trying to point out, and I want the board to understand this, I'm not, I'm just pointing out that difference in base year. That gap is what creates the difference. Okay? Now, if you go to the next page, and I'll just show you this real quickly. And this is how they make up for the differential. And I know it's hard for you guys to see it up there, I don't know if you can. But the differential is if you take, if you take the current assessed value in Crawford County, which is 54.47, and you divide that by the current assessed value in Mercer, 96.11, and that's in the formula, you should come up with .57. That's the differential between the two. So when you compare a home in Crawford, you can't compare a $30,000 home with a $30,000 home. Right? If you, in that, on that chart, if you take, and I'm just going to show you how the formula works. On that chart, if you take a $30,000 home in Mercer, and the tax is 2883, I believe it is, right? And then you take a $30,000 home in Crawford where the tax is 1634, right? Now, if you, if you were to take 2883 times .57, does anybody do that? 2883 times .57. 1643. And the, and that property in Crawford is taxed at 1634. Now, this, I'm just showing you how step works. Take, it took a long time to figure this out. 1634, divide that by the 1643, you should come up with 99. Step is saying that those two values, the 2883 and the 1634 are equivalent in the sense that you go back to one base year versus another base year, and that's how the formula works. I'm just showing the board how it works. I'm just, I'm not trying to tell you anything. I'm just saying it took some time to understand why that formula works. So go to the next slide and I'm going to shut up and take questions. All right? I got two more slides, I'm going to take questions. So if you are, Lisa, back up, to the next one, back up, right there. If you take a home at 25,000 in Crawford, it's going to be equivalent to a home value of 14, $14,250. And if you look at the two taxes, it's going to be about 99% equivalent, equivalent. You follow what I'm doing there? And so that's why it's hard to compare when, when the difference was one value of a house was 24,000 versus another, it's not going to be apples to apples. That's what that step formula does. It takes it and makes it apple to apple. Okay? And so, go to the next one, Lisa. What I just want the board to understand is that, the next one. If you look at that, what we're going to do is take out the equalizer and level everything out. The key is, I want you to see this. You're going to take, look at where it says 15,000, because that is the most assessed, close to assessed value in Mercer County. You're going to put in that new step ratio and divide it. That's where you get that 74,000. That 74,000, well, according to the new step formula, you can only take 75% of that. Your, your now, your new assessed value is $55,814 on what's, what used to be an assessed value of 15,000. Are you guys following me there? So your assessed value, because you just leveled it out, has now set a $15,000 home, that's what's going to, and I've been trying to figure out, is that what's going to be on your bill? Because right now, if you look at your, your bill, it's going to say 15,000, then you do times your, for, for, you're going to do the millage divided by 1,000, that's, that's how you get your dollar amount. So now, if you do that, then that assessed value has to change to 55, because you've taken it out. You've taken out the, the equalizer, you've taken out the equalizer in the, in this. So if you, I don't, Lisa, do I have one more on there? I think I wanted to just show this. If you look at assessed values, and then you look at, that's going to be, the Mercer County is going to be the fair market value and the fair market value. Now, we can only take 75% of that new step number, that's where you get that 55. Now, if you take, if you take the 70, the 97,350 divided by the 55, Mercer County is going to be taxed on 57.3% of their fair market value. And if you do the same thing to Crawford, the 60, you take the 55, 18 divided by the 61,950, they're going to pay 90% of their fair market value on the assessed value, from the assessed value. So I have to figure this out. I just, and there were some questions that came up, and I started reading more, the Pennsylvania school code provides three options for school districts to reside, that reside in multiple counties, right, to levy taxes. The primary method used by the majority of the school districts across the state is the current method used by Crawford Central School District. The reason why, and this was a question that came up, that's why I was curious about it. The reason why 98% of the school districts utilize this methodology is because it takes into consideration variables such as the common level ratio, the base year assessed value, the fair market value, the sales values of properties sold in a previous year to equally assessed to taxes. Right? In fact, the 2% that use the alternative method, approximately 75% of them have similar, now here's where it works. If they have similar common level ratios and very close assessed base years, but remember, the further they get apart, the less likely you can compare. And the, the further they get apart, the more you have to use a formula to try to equalize it out. And so, I just wanted, once I went through that and understood it a little bit more and started saying that, that, that is really very interesting because that is, the way we're looking at it is equal as opposed to equitable. Right? That formula takes all those things into consideration and tries to equal it out. So I just wanted to share that and there were some questions going up. Ron, you have one, and I think I saw somebody else.
Well, mine's more of a statement. You know, it is not reassessed on sale, but anytime you apply for a building permit or demolition, I can't think for Mercer County, but in Crawford County, anytime you apply for a building permit or demolition permit is reassessed. So I guess my question then comes down to, are the properties that have been reassessed, are they using this multiplier? And so somebody that never improved their property, that never was reassessed, is using the same. So they, like the 1972 number that you're talking about, Jeff, you know, or that, some people using that number and somebody built onto their house two years ago and got reassessed, and now that same multiplier is going against that property.
Okay, so here's what I found out, Ron, when I asked that question. Because the question I asked, according to what you just said, and the question I was confused about, I said, if I build a $200,000 house right now in the city of Meaville, what is it assessed at? Right? That's the question. Right? It goes back to 1985 base year. That is the base year of what they use. I, I don't know the answer why, so that's equitable with everybody else. But I asked that question specifically because I was confused. Because I was thinking like, kind of in the same line, you know, well, why wouldn't that be changing over every time somebody added on, whatever? And you, I heard you were shaking your head saying you added on, your assessment went up. But your assessment went up, but it was still based on 1972 evaluation. Now, that is, I don't make that up. I'm, I'm just telling you what was shared, shared with me when I called, because I was just thinking the same thing. Why wouldn't it just be valued at $200,000?
Could you explain how that happens?
How what happened?
How you take it back to 86 or 72.
Because remember what I said to you, that the, the base year is the most important thing that they use in this common level ratio. I don't know.
Was there a multiplier times current, is it, does it look inflation?
Yeah, every year, every year, I think I have it here somewhere, hang on, in my paperwork. Every year, okay, so I had to read this thing on common level ratio. But every year, this real estate, realty transfer tax of common level ratios is put out. Okay? And what they do is they, they are the people who calculate in every county based on your sales and your base year that your county is using. Because every county is using a different base year. Okay?
Example, your 200,000, what does, what does that look like in 72?
In 72, I don't know the price. I, but, but if you, if I was to go build a house in Mercer, according to the way I understand this, they would go back to 1972 for my assessed year. If I was to build a 2, a $200,000 house in Crawford, they would go back to 1985 as the base year of assessment.
Right, which means they would do something to that number. Would it be less presumably?
My assessment would be less, obviously.
You can look at the simple multiplier.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, it's a multiplier, probably.
So at 200,000, it would be assessed at 75,000 in 1972 on this slide.
That's roughly based on what, inflation or?
Yeah, so it's basically reverse inflation, right? So, so a two, this says 212,000, $212,000 home would be assessed as 75,000 in 1972. And in 1985, it would be, at 2,000, 212,000 would be assessed as 100,000 in Crawford County. So Mercer would be 75, Crawford would be 100 for the same $200,000 house.
I just wanted to, once I started digging into it and reading it and realizing that's what that formula does, that, that that formula does, so I can, I can almost guarantee you, you can use this mathematical formula. If you want to find the equivalent assessed house in Mercer to Crawford, if you take a 20,000, and you can do it on any number, take a $20,000 home, multiply that by the assessed value, multiply that by .57, it's going to give you the equal assessed value home in Mercer. And if you do, and if you walk through the formulas, you're saying, no, it won't?
I don't, I don't believe that a house, a $500,000 house in Meaville would be the same as a $200,000 house in Mercer. I don't believe that.
Now, 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 understand, assessed value.
Right.
Back to the base year.
Right.
That's how that formula works out. Okay, I just wanted the board to know that. Any questions? Because like I said, as I started listening to that and looking at it, and I was like, okay, this is, this is pretty interesting because the formula is designed, and like I said, if counties have similar base years, like I'll give you a prime example where that, that works very well. If French Creek wasn't in the, in there, everybody's base year would be very similar, would be the same, exactly. And the C R Ls would be very similar. So the years, the ones that, that were on that list, and I'll get right to you, sir. I see you. That ones that were on the list, they had very, six out of the eight had very close, and I don't, when I say very close, but.
What list?
There were like eight schools that were using the alternative. That's the list that you guys provided. Yes, sir.
Sir, thank you for your, your background on this, it's very helpful. Question I have is, you talked about up here, 75% level, then you mentioned 80%, level. Is it the board's proposal that that's going to switch this year to go from 75% to 90%?
Oh, no, sir. That was just, those are just examples that I have in this spreadsheet. No, absolutely, there, listen, there is no proposal here. I was just sharing with the board.
I can answer that, that, the assess, what you're talking about, you're asking if it's going to go to the 90% that he's saying, or in his example, no. The counties set that assessment rate.
Right.
Mercer County went from the 33 and a third, or whatever it was, to 100% back in 2002. Crawford County has stayed at the 75%. And I had just raised that question to Commissioner Wiederspan. I was asking him as to who sets that assessment rate? Is that a thing that the school board can do on a school tax basis? And he said, no, that's usually handled by the county commissioners, they set that rate. So if they wanted to go to the 100%, as Mercer County did, it's at their leisure, they could go and say, okay, next year we're going to go to 100%. But would I see that happening? No.
Okay, thank you.
But, but if I understand it correctly, the 75% and the 100% are not as impactful as the base year of assessment.
Right, that's the.
That is the key. Because when Mercer County went from the 33 and a half to 75%, I mean to 100% in 2002, their C L R came down considerably. It's just over the years, that gap has gotten greater and greater between the assessed value in Crawford County versus the assessed value in Mercer County because of the base year. That's the key. The base year is the key.
Which is why, I, I think, which is why if you talk to the people at STEP, even I believe Ben said the same thing, from the school subsidies, countywide reassessments would, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but countywide reassessments would make that a bigger or a better playing field. When you're looking at 1972, really basically both of them, 72, 73, but you're looking at Crawford County, which re, whatever the term would be, reevaluated the base year in 1985, brought ours, ours up compared to a countywide reassessment. I mean, I mean, that's the only answer I can give you.
Well, well, the, actually, Kevin, what happens is, your C R L is an attempt to not have to do an assessment every year.
Right.
Right? And what you can see is what GM was pointing out, if you look at Mercer County, there, it was extremely high, it was, it was 9.35, 9.9, 10.8, and then the following year, that year that they split, or whatever they did, it dropped all the way down to 3. Okay? And so what that says in those years, remember I said, they take a median, in the county, in the county, something, a lot of, maybe 11 properties sold, I keep using 11, because it used that middle number to help establish this. And that is what determines your fair market value. Okay? And when that spreads, that's what causes the differential to, to increase as well. So I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. Did I see somebody raise their hand? Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to do all this algebra in front of my math teachers out there, I don't want them calling me tomorrow morning. But actually, once I started reading the STEP thing, and I started understanding, it really is mathematics and math balancing numbers. That's really was. And so they came up with a formula to say that these rate, these, these assessments are different in different counties, and how do we balance that out? So if you take a very similar household number and you, and you multiply it by that point, by the C L R, you're going to get the fair market value. But if you take the tax number and multiply it by .57, you're going to get a very similar number to the number in Crawford of the same assessed value.
So that's all problem could take care of itself, they just eliminated property tax.
I'm all for that, Kevin. I'm all for that. So I, I just wanted the board to hear that and understand that. Do you have a question, Ron?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just, I might be misremembering and, and that's fine. But the median household income for French Creek is reported here as 64,000 a year. And I remember this 18,000 number from the first time we went.
I don't know where that, where, we would have, I would have gotten that off of, like, when we went to the sites that were available, unless I'm missing something. I can double check the number. Which one, the household income, Ryan?
Yeah, the median household income. I didn't, I didn't know.
You didn't think it was that high?
I didn't think it was that high.
I'll double check the number. I could, I could be wrong. I, I'll double check the number.
And the median home value of a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, those all would have come off public sites, but I'll double check it.
Okay.
I'll double check. Which one, the median household of French Creek?
Median household income of French Creek, yeah. It's sixty-four.
Okay.
It's listed as sixty-four.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll double check it. And the other, uh, Ryan, so I just make sure I get the notes. Was it the?
The median home value of?
Value of French Creek?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And that median home, median home, is that the, which value is that?
Yeah, is that?
Is that assessed, is that?
That is where fair market value is.
Fair market value, yes, yeah. Fair market values. Fair market values.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Just to clarify, uh, based off of Ryan's question, um, so this, uh, median household income, that would actually, being how they have a lower population, if they have like one or two people who are in a higher income bracket, that would make that number seem higher than what it would compared to me.
I'm not sure how they, I, I can check into it, but the, but the reality, that could be, that certainly can be, yes. But you got to remember that still, what we're still talking about, what's driving this formula is the base year assessment. That was just, that was just demographic information. That was just demographic information. And the reason that demographic information came to my head, Ryan, that I heard somebody saying like, well, what do you mean, five hundred, five hundred and fifty-two parcels? What do you mean? And I thought, well, jeez, maybe that needs clarifying. That's why that demographic stuff.
I appreciate that, I just think I must be misremembering something. I, I also just wanted to answer Holly's question, that it would, I think the mean would be thrown out by a couple of people, but not the median as much.
Right. The median is just what they're, they would just list all of it and say, this is the mid, middle number.
Of all of, so.
Of all the salaries, of all the salaries.
Of the whatever, four, four hundred and, I wrote it then.
Right, thank you, Ryan, you're right. Okay.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Seven eighty-eight.
Oh, sorry.
Question on that. Now, you say the base value between Crawford and Mercer, I've been listening to what you're saying, but when you look at the base value, and I don't have the numbers with me tonight, wasn't looking for this to come up, but when you look at the base value of other municipalities in Mercer County, when we were doing comparison at the township building for those, going off what you're saying tonight, Sharon, Farrell, all of those are way higher, okay, a- as well, because they're in Mercer County, right? But French Creek is still paying a way higher rate than Sharon and Farrell and all of those. So, based off what you, you know, I'm not saying that what you're saying is not true, but when you look at those municipalities, they're based off that same thing, because they're Mercer County, but we're still paying way more in French Creek Township.
I, I, and I don't know what Sharon and those, but they, this is a countywide, um...
I'm not sure what you're saying, but I know that, I mean, the base, the base year of assessment in Mercer County for every municipality in Mercer County is nineteen seventy-two.
That should be the base year for everybody.
Right, I agree with that. But when you look at the school tax end of it back, with us being in Crawford, we're paying way more than Sharon, Farrell, there's a whole bunch of them.
Because they're, they're compared, Mercer County to Mercer County.
Right.
This is Mercer County to Crawford County, and that's where the base level year makes a difference.
We're, we're in the wrong court. We need to.
But you don't think that's fair? All of you up on that board?
No, no, ma'am, ma'am.
You lived in Mercer County where we live at.
Ma'am, this wasn't an argument about fairness. I was just showing them how the formula works out.
And we always have to vote on it.
Right, I was just showing them how the formula works out.
I have a question on, on the, on the formula, when, when they do the CLR or the STEB or whatever it is, since French Creek Township is in, in our school district, is it, or is each school district lumped together as they take property, or is it done county by county?
It's done, but county by county. And that's why you get different CRLs.
Anything that sells in Mercer County affects the value in French Creek Township.
When they do the CRL.
It's, it's not, since they're not in them, they're not done by themselves because...
They're in that county.
They're in that county.
They're in that county. Just like everybody in Crawford County, whatever sells in Crawford County goes to Crawford County, and they're, they're going to use a different.
I thought when we talked earlier, there was, whatever was in Crawford Central affected.
No, no, this is county, remember I said?
Except for the, because, okay, so.
Yeah, that's why I said, it is, it is a county. That's a county level, it's a county level. It's a, it's, it's a county level.
I don't know, I'm not paying school taxes, I don't care.
Mrs. Blippa?
I'm done.
May, may I speak as a taxpayer and not as Board Secretary?
Tim, is that allowed?
I don't know, Tim. Give me a legal.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But would you please go to the podium, state your name and address then?
Hi, my name's Lisa Pitner, and I live at one five five zero four Harmersburg Road in Meville. And looking at the fair market value, um, and I just want to clarify, so if I sell my home, it will just take the lease amount, fifteen thousand assessed value, if I sell my home in Crawford County, approximately, I'm going to get sixty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, give or take. If they say, if they sell their home in Mercer County assessed at the same fifteen thousand dollars, they're going to make almost thirty-five thousand, a little over thirty-five thousand dollars more on their sale of property than I am in Crawford County. Is that correct?
Based on fair market.
Based on, based on fair market value, of course.
And, and as you notice, as, obviously as the assessed value climbs, that's a huge, huge difference.
And that's just because of the base level.
Right, correct.
Year of assessment.
Right, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you.
So I just didn't, I just, if I had that knowledge and didn't share it, and then later on, somebody comes back and say, well, didn't somebody look into this? That's how that works, so I, I just felt that I should share it.
So what do we do about the resolution?
Well, you, you have a, you have a resolution that has not been read yet.
And so, I mean, I guess we could, is, do people feel they have enough information and understanding of the information? Or do you feel like we need to table it and let all this information be absorbed? And then we can always reconvene? I mean, we don't have to wait a whole nother month if we really want to vote on this resolution. I mean, we can, could we not table it and have a special meeting in another week or two?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that's.
You have a, you have a motion on the agenda. It has not been moved, it has not been seconded. Um, so you have all the options available to you. So you can vote to approve, deny, table, or amend.
Personally, for me, holding another week or two is not going to change my mind one way or the other. I'm in favor of going to the option we've talked about, and I'm prepared to vote tonight for that.
I guess I am too, and I guess by Robert's rules, we got to have a first and a second to even discuss it, don't we? Result that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves for the district to move to the taxation method of A two-three for the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three general fund budget and ISO move.
I'll second that.
And does any, are there any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I guess my question is, sorry, I don't know if you can hear me. I guess my question is, with the new assessed values, under the A two-three plan on the last slide, the last column under new assessed values, it looks like the district will be poised to lose a great deal of assessed value. Yes, am I reading that correctly?
Wait, say that again.
Under the, uh, assessed value using method sixty, sixty-seven-two point one, there's the last column is a new assessed value number?
Mm-hmm.
And so if you compare that new assessed value to the Crawford County and Mercer County values, that, that new assessed value column is less than both of those columns, right? Even the new assessed value is less than the current Crawford County value.
Well, it's, it's less than the fair market value. It is not, the assessed value is fifteen thousand for everybody.
Oh, I was missing this.
That, the assessed value, that fifteen thousand assessed value is for Crawford County and for Mercer County, whether, wherever you reside.
Right.
So what you're seeing is, then everybody's assessed value becomes the fifty-five. Now, if you go back to the fair market value of the homes, you'll see that, that is being displaced over, it's being displaced over into Crawford County.
Okay, so that's seventy-four, four eighteen would actually be the fair market value of that fifteen row, remember you're not?
It's not the fair, that came from.
That's, but that is spread out amongst all of the, yes.
That's the STEB number. If you go back, Ryan, to the, one more, one more, this, this one, yeah, right there, if you go to the fifteen thousand column, what you'll see is fifteen thousand, and then you see STEB ratio, see that number? You have to take the fifteen thousand and divide it by the STEB ratio number, that comes from the department, that gives you that assessed value number of seventy-four thousand. Now, we can only take seventy-five percent of it. So then you take that seventy-five percent, then that's how you get that fifty-five. So that STEB number is the number given to us each year.
But French Creek would still be at one hundred percent because they're in Mercer?
No, 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 everybody will be this way now.
Okay, yeah, everybody will be this way.
But when Tom was talking about the fifty-seven percent and the ninety percent, if you look at the fair market values, then Mercer County people will be paying at about fifty-seven percent of their fair market value, while Crawford Central, Crawford County will be paying at ninety percent of their fair market value. Okay? Cause it took the equalizer out.
Because the equalizer comes out.
It makes the, it makes the tax equal, but the equalizers of the property values are taken out.
Right. So I believe that you guys are discussing, if you, you have a, you have a motion on the floor that's been properly second, properly second, and.
And I've asked, are there any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my comment is that I, I felt like we were helping people with a really low assessed home value and income, and now I feel like the information that has been provided shows the opposite of that, that we're helping people with high incomes and high home assessed values through this process. And so I would like more information about that personally before I vote on this tonight, because I'm not sure where those, where those two values in my head come from. And I know that that's not happening. I know that we're voting on that now, but that's where my head is at.
So you've, you're saying you need, you would have rather tabled.
I would have rather tabled, that's not what's happening. So I will vote no on this because of that, I think.
But I, I just want to make sure, clarify for you, um, that neither one of those demographics have anything to do, are big pillars in the differential. I just put that as.
It's the assessed year.
You're right, right.
The assessed year.
Assessed year. So e- even if I come back and tell you they're correct or they're a little bit different, that really doesn't have a whole lot to do, that was just painting, you know, demographic information. It doesn't have a whole lot to do with the balancing or rebalancing.
I mean, if I understand it correctly, and it is, I mean, I, that's why I think there's a whole lot of information out here that, that everybody needs to assimilate. If I understand it correctly, the formula that we have been using equalizes the difference between the base level assessment across the two counties. So it rates the property values equitably. So in general, you have a fifteen thousand dollar home assessed in French Creek Valley because Crawford County was reassessed in nineteen eighty-five base year. It's almost a fifty percent difference. So that equability factor is being taken out. And now, they're looking at the formula, the, the last formula, if we move to it, just looks at taking all those properties that are fifteen thousand dollars here, fifteen thousand dollars there, and trying to level it out without looking at the equability of the property values. So you have, the first one takes, you have apples in Crawford County, oranges in Mercer County. I like apples and I like oranges, but you can't compare the two. So what the first, um, formula that we have been using tries to take those oranges in Mercer County and turn them into apples, so we're rating them equally. Now, the tax doesn't look like the same, but it makes it apples to apples. This last formula will take those apples and those oranges and not make either one. They're going to make a lime. But the lime in Crawford County is different tasting than the lime in Mercer County by almost thirty-three percent. And that burden is being transferred to Crawford County. That's the best way I can explain it, in my understanding.
Sounds like I want to turn it down.
So this is where we're at on this. We have a first and a second, so I guess, Tim, if I'm correct, we need to vote.
Now would be the time to call a question, if there's no further comments.
Okay, are there any further comments? All right.
Roll call vote?
Yeah, let's take a roll call vote, just so it's clear.
Mrs. Blippa?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pickering?
No.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Four four.
Four four.
Oh my God. Give us a break.
So did it, Tim, it fails?
It doesn't pass. I believe that would be a five away vote that would require at least a five affirmative votes to pass.
So do we have a special meeting?
Let me just check one thing here. Yeah, so section five oh eight of the school, of the school code says that the affirmative vote of a majority of all of the members of the, of the Board of School Directors shall be required to, among other things, levy and assess taxes. Um, it would be my opinion that this would be, um, a, a vote related to this, that assess, that levying of taxes, uh, and it'd be a five away vote, which would require five affirmative votes in order to pass.
Okay.
So motion fails.
So the motion fails. All right.
I can't, I can't. I cannot pay this.
That's, I was just.
They can come back by one of the three. We can, Tim, can we bring this back?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
So could, we could, under section ten on the agenda?
Oh, you mean discuss it again?
Well, yeah, to, to talk about a special meeting and maybe what more information we might need before that.
Right.
So, that would be the timer right now.
So let me just, the process, um, the, the board would have the ability to reconsider the motion that was taken. It would have to be moved by an individual who voted.
No.
In the effective manner, so in this case, it would be a no. Um, and it would require three quarters or a super majority of the board to approve the option to reconsider. And then you would put it back on the table for reconsideration, if you're going to do the same motion.
So for tonight, or is, is he, he's talking about, can we just bring this back for like, let's just say, like, are you even saying like in a committee meeting for discussion, for further discussion, and then bring it back onto the agenda?
Under section A two, this was option three, there were two others, that given the, the research and stuff that you showed tonight, that might be more effective at leveling this out. this out. And we weren't considering any of those, we were just considering this one right now. And so I guess that's, that's where I'm going on this, I mean...
That's entirely new subject.
That's entirely new motion.
Yes.
But if it, if we come back to this would be the best one, then somebody that voted no would have to make that motion, if we have a special meeting to do that, which it seems to me with the time crunch that we're going to be under, we're going to have to have another meeting before, in my opinion, I don't set that as a policy agenda.
All right, so I just want to get this clear before we move on. So do we need to make a motion in order to further discuss this, or can we just further discuss it, and then after that, if we want to put it on the agenda, we can?
Correct. If you want to have another, if you want to have a special meeting for the purpose of discussing it, you would schedule it in the same manner that you would schedule any special meeting.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have to turn this all into a motion.
No action is necessary to, to have that happen, that would be, the board's, as your discretion.
And then if this, if they wanted to have a motion, they can at that special meeting have a motion to, at the next meeting to do something, right?
Absolutely.
That's what I thought.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? We'll just set a, a special meeting and move forward with this, with more information. So we don't have to do anything with that tonight?
Correct.
Would that be public?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Or, I mean, set it for next Monday night?
We can do, yeah, we, but we don't have to do that through...
Well, we have to get out notices, don't we?
Yeah, but we, we will do that, but we don't have to do, what I'm saying, we don't have to do this on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? We can do that immediately tomorrow morning and get it out, okay?
All right.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
And you said next Monday?
Well, we'll send it, we'll send it out.
Okay.
All right.
Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Budget in the total amount of sixty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. The Board further approves the total member districts contributions to the General Operating Fund, zero one zero, and School Improvement Services Fund, zero two zero, budgets of the intermediate unit for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for one million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars with individual member district contributions as determined by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and ISO move.
And I need a second. Okay, Delwood, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule L budgetary transfers and amendments and ISO move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to personnel, approval of, be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar, and I need a motion.
So move.
I couldn't hear who was...
It was Brian and then...
Okay, Brian and Melissa. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First reading of revisions to Policy Two Forty-nine bullying, cyberbullying, and there's attachment one, and no vote is necessary. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the waiver and stipulation involving student B and C respectively, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin, and a second?
Aye.
Jeff?
Holly.
What was that, Holly? Okay.
Right, Holly?
All right. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, Schedule A, B, C, D, E, F, H, I, and M, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin, and a second? Melissa, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
I do have a question now, that I raised earlier about amending the agenda for the discussion of the missing absent board member. It's reasons like what just happened tonight, that I think is beneficial, we have five board members, or nine.
Okay, do we need to move to executive session, Tim? Okay.
I, I just, I just need a brief, three minutes to give you some...
Yeah, I have some questions myself.
And then, and then if you still want to amend the agenda and have that discussion, I just ask you, give me that opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Tim. Okay. What, no, we, we would move to executive now and come back and finish the meeting. Okay?
Yeah, that's...
Correct?
Right, because, because they still...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so...
Okay, because there's two people to talk to.
We have to go with...
Yeah, we're going to the executive session, okay, what Tim has to say, and we'll be back. Okay.
My apologies.
With regard to what we broke for session, for executive session, after being advised by our solicitor, we do have a plan of action in place, which will come to fruition in the near future. Okay, so now we are back to public comments. Okay, do you have any more further?
No, let's get to the public.
Okay. So, public comment, and first is Ed DeBoer.
Yeah, I'm Ed DeBoer, I live out in West Mead Township, I went to schooling in the Crawford Central School District, and I was a teacher for thirty years before retiring from a school down in Central PA, so, okay. Critical race theory is one of several subsections of the broader critical theory developed by the neo-Marxist Frankfurt School, which criticizes Western societies as a way to undermine their legitimacy, promoting various categories of oppressed versus oppressors to replace the old economic categories of proletariat versus bourgeoisie, in order to instigate a communist revolution that would never succeed under the original Marxist paradigm. The various component critical theories are also influenced by post-modernism, relativist philosophy that claims all knowledge and truth is subjective, perceived and determined by the individual, denying objective truth exists. They begin with an assumption that all our society's systems are hopelessly biased, i.e. racist, homophobic, patriarchal, et cetera, due to the power base in place when created, needing to be criticized, deconstructed, and replaced with power structures in line with their desired ends. Only personal perspective, group identity, politics, and power matter, truth is not. As a student in this district, Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech resonated with me because I recognized the self-evident objective truth that people should be judged beyond the content of their character rather than the color of their skin. Critical race theory now tells us that his dream of a colorblind society where success is based on individual merit alone is somehow racist. It identifies with civil rights movements to cultivate an air of moral legitimacy while criticizing them for not being radical enough. I can't imagine a more racist concept than CRT. It teaches black children that no matter how much they learn, how hard they work, and how much they achieve, they'll never succeed in reaching their true potential because they'll always be an oppressed victim, and it teaches white children that regardless of the condition of their individual morality, they're inherently evil racist oppressors because of their whiteness. Derek Bell of Harvard Law coined the term "critical race theory," but it's never been limited to college law classes. Like other critical theories, it's spread throughout higher education and has already filtered down through secondary and elementary schools. It may be introduced under different titles or in bits and pieces. CRT material is often listed in the references and resources for covert additions to curriculum. Schools using sixteen nineteen project materials in their history curriculum promote CRT through historical revisionism intended to discredit America's founding as being rooted in slavery rather than its Declaration of Independence in seventeen seventy-six. When the many historical errors in the original New York Times series were revealed by reputable scholars, they were forced to admit it was an opinion piece rather than investigative historical journalism. Still, it's taught as if it were valid. Implicit bias trainings and tests are tied to CRT and other critical theories. The notion of implicit bias is unscientific, starting and ending with the assumption that everyone has a subconscious bias for or against members of different identity groups.
Mr. DeBoer, you have about ten seconds to wrap this up, you're at your three minutes.
I, I notified ahead of time and was told that if I did that five days in advance, I'd have five.
Was he on the list, Lisa? I didn't have him on the list.
I noted, I think I notified you, I sent an email.
Not me.
Me, or her, you said?
I, what's your name, ma'am?
Jan Filippa.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I sent an email through the school's website.
I'm sorry, I did not receive it.
Well, I, I have like three more paragraphs, short paragraphs, can I just continue and finish?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, the notion of implicit bias is unscientific, starting and ending with the assumption that everyone has a subconscious bias for or against members of different identity groups, thanks to the unjust intersecting power dynamics that allegedly structure society, and that these presumed biases can be rooted out and corrected. Since the same person can take the same implicit bias test on two separate occasions with totally opposite results, their reliability is suspect. Diversity, inclusion, and equity programs are aspects of CRT and other critical theories. These terms sound noble, egalitarian, and virtuous until one delves into their definitions and implications according to critical social justice theory. In its view, diversity focuses on physical and cultural differences based on its conceptions of privilege and marginalization. It then seeks to privilege the marginalized and marginalize the privileged in order to redress the imbalances it imagines in society. There's the diversity of appearance that demands conformity of thought. Inclusion traditionally means welcoming everyone. However, in critical social justice usage, it means welcoming groups considered marginalized while excluding and silencing groups, such as straight white males, that are considered part of the supposed systematically, systemically oppressive power structure. Equity sounds like equality but has a very different definition in critical theories. Whereas equality means that Citizen A and Citizen B are treated equally, equity means adjusting shares in order to make Citizens A and B equal. Equity is a kind of social communism, the intentional redistribution of shares, not along lines of existing economic disparity, but as a form of reparations in order to correct historical injustices as they've been determined by critical theories. A school's mission should be advancing academic achievement for all its students, not political indoctrination. And I included a link at the bottom I use for reference, and there are other links to other sites that you can follow from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your...
Amy Oviya.
Okay, so Amy Oviya, you all know me, from Meaville Three Kids. Last week I mentioned the loss of classrooms in our district, and I was very happy to look on the website and see openings available for teachers to bid on who have lost their classrooms. However, there are classrooms in the primary grades that have been eliminated, taking them from three to two. We always had three classrooms per grade in the primary level, this year in First District, only two kindergarten classrooms with twenty-five students in each one. A fourth grade teacher is retiring and her position is not being filled as of now, which means next year there'll be, there will be twenty-eight or more students in the two classrooms each. These decisions affect not just our students and teachers, but also our community, which seems like the word tonight, community. Our students, according to the two thousand twenty-one PSSA results, they are historically underperforming. Teachers are pressured to teach to test, not to teach to learn. Higher number of behaviors in classrooms interfering with school and learning experience. Kids in second grade this year never had a normal school year, never. They are behind socially and academically. We have students falling behind who need extra help, we have kids right where they need to be, and we have some that are advanced who could use a little bit of a challenge. Three classrooms is ideal for this situation. Where will our kids fall with only two? How do we plan on catching our students up in the learning that they have fallen so far behind it? Our teachers, why are our teachers choosing to leave the profession? A study from Alliance for Education found that the top reasons for teacher dropout is there are so many mandates and expectations that the flexibility and time necessary to build a real learning environment does not exist. The study found teachers feel the classrooms are untenable due to behaviors, there is not time to deal with them, and then the learning and teaching environment suffer. Our teachers are trying to teach twenty to thirty different personalities, spanning multiple socioeconomic and functional backgrounds. Students function at different levels of academic and social ability, adding more will not help. Behaviors need to be dealt with, but due to mandates and schedules and workloads, behaviors are treated as a non-priority. How can this be when it is the behaviors that are causing the learning and teaching environment to diminish, making the classroom more difficult? And now the behaviors are at an all-time high. Choking is a silent killer in our classroom, and with twenty-five students to one teacher, how long will it take for a teacher to notice? How long will it take for the nurse to get there, if we're lucky enough to have a nurse in our building that day? Yes, I am aware there are studies that say that as long as there are a high-quality teacher in the room, class size does not matter. What would those studies show now after COVID? So you reward teachers with a higher class size. So if a cop is really good at his patrol, and we, do we give him more space to patrol? Sounds great, yeah, he'll probably do a great job, but if he's on point A and he's got to get to point B for, for a call, it's going to take him longer to get there. Our teachers are good and they can get there, but how long are we willing to give them to try? How long are we going to let this go and let our kids keep failing? Sorry, I lost my place. Our community, our schools and our community reflect each other. The better our schools, the better our community will be. Our students aren't just numbers in the classroom, our students are our future contributing members of our community. They are our future nurses, teachers, carpenters, electricians, doctors, accountants. If we don't address the poor academic performance and get our kids caught up, this will have long-lasting negative effects in our schools and in our community in the next five to ten years. I want to know, why do we bus kids that belong in one elementary school to another? It's because there's no room for them, so class size does matter, apparently. I want to know why in the high school it only takes twelve kids to create a classroom, but not at the elementary level? Our website states that our student teacher ratio is twelve to one. What classroom in elementary does that exist in? When our students are failing academically and socially, when our teachers are seeing record numbers of behaviors inside the classroom, when our teachers are burnt out from the last two years, how does eliminating a classroom, causing higher class sizes benefit anyone? How does this benefit our students? How does this benefit our teachers? How does this benefit our community? And speaking of community, this meeting, I think, took a lot out of everyone, and it's kind of deflating, because I saw all of our community members here fighting, and every single one of them were shut down. Does anybody feel community anymore? Because it doesn't feel like it's here.
Okay, any other public comments?
I was actually on the list, and you probably anticipated that it was a Hubbard-Buss thing, because I happen to be bus driver Alan Schaefer, but I wanted to wait until after I heard what the reactions were to their comments. You notice they all got up and walked out. I went through the loss of the contract at FCCA, where they lost the Head Start program, and I watched, you know, the panic, the various phases that those drivers and mostly teachers went through. I want to make sure you understand, this is very different than that. There, they gambled, that all the people come flocking back, they got about fifty percent of the people back, but they didn't get them all, but that... I want to make sure you understand, this is very different than that. There, they gambled, that all the people come flocking back, they get about 50% of the people back, but they didn't get them all, but that was okay for them. They were able to handle that because it's a much broader spectrum that they can draw from. Social, people with social, sociology degrees, psychology degree, you know, a lot of people can step into some of those roles. Here, you've got a bunch of people who are largely senior citizens. They are only able to afford that because they have social security or other supplemental income. This new company, I'm just going to say it now, your attitude or your impression and your pencil pushing approach to it, while Noble, from a dollars and cents perspective, is going to bite you. That's my prediction. You are not going to believe me, so that's fine, but mark my words. They're not going to get, Hubbard Bus is going to stay in existence. Maybe you didn't factor that in. And they're going to keep 25 or so percent of the best employees. So all that's left of the pool is the other three-quarter percent, many of whom have already signed a piece of paper, as did I, requesting the school district not to pass our personal information along to this new vendor. We know where they are, we can go find them, but they don't need to be calling and soliciting us like what happened in my previous example. I can't predict on a one-to-one basis, but I can tell you that you saw half of the drivers here tonight, and the other half that didn't come, it was only because they had other obligations already ahead of time. So don't under, don't underestimate the sincerity of what these people said. This wasn't just an expression of community. This was an expression of intent. You will be seeing, as will many people, this is not a problem that's localized to your school district. This is the entire 79 corridor. We're some of the lowest-paid drivers in that entire corridor. The comments that were made here about how Jeff was less than agreeable in some of the negotiations, I am privy to most of the numbers that you and he discussed, and what I know is that you had requirements for new buses, which are absurd. No, no sane individual proprietor is going to do that. So you're obviously pushing toward the sort of the corporate approach, and this company you've chosen has a lot of investors involved. They also have a shell corporation that, when your solicitor decides to sue, will go, huh, okay. And a year and a half, two years from now, when they've proven that they can't provide you with the drivers, you're going to have a big issue, because you can sue them all you want, that's not going to get you any drivers. So just some food for thought. I personally am retiring. So this is, there's no skin on my back.
Sir, you're at your three minutes.
That'll do. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any other board comments at this time? Okay, then we resolve that being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:38, and I need a motion. Melissa? Second. Jeff, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.